Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council meeting on February 18th. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight, and I will be presiding. We're going to start, as we usually do, before we determine whether we're warm or not. We take this opportunity to provide the public an opportunity to speak to us. So doing -- we will not comment. You get to say your piece on any topic of your choosing. I just ask that you keep in mind the decorum of the chamber and be civil. But you're not limited by topic, as I said. But you are limited by time, and we limit the comments to three minutes per person, because I'll have to go home at some point. And the only other thing that I would ask you to do is when I call your name, come up, repeat your name and your address, and then your three minutes start there. And also, if you haven't signed up, it's okay. You're not excluded from speaking. You will have an -- I'll give folks an opportunity if they still feel the urge to speak. So first up, we have Hildegard Friedman, please.
Hildegard Friedman, 137 High Street, apartment 130. Oh, we, the people, over 300 million people, did we hear the guns? Did we swallow Aaron Alexis's pills, the mass murder pills? Did we notice the lives ruined, the people murdered, the communities destroyed by the epidemic of heroin, cocaine, new strains of marijuana laced with pharmaceuticals? Some additions provided by and contributing to the purse strings of those practicing missile launches against America. We, the people, are we asleep or are we ready to make this city the most outstanding in the United States? There is a grant, and no matter what you got, an email that defines a grant in a certain way, it can be written for 50-year-olds, it doesn't need to be written for 20-year-olds. The outgoing mayor of Pittsfield, Mayor Bianchi, obtained an anti-gang, anti-terrorism grant, which gets police in the door. We're not talking about the Hoover administration. This isn't a death thing with machine guns. I know some people are going to misconstrue. I don't want to inform you which people. You know which people. Gets police in the door with a mentor. Gets police in the door with a social worker. In the door to anybody that has any extent of drug history, not indictments. I've had Cindy in the mayor's office provide the information to Mr. Dwight, and Pam has sent it to you people via email. And as late as mid-afternoon today, I was making endeavor with one of the mayor's assistants, Mayor Nakua's assistants, to put together an outstanding former attorney, now pastor, who's one of the pivotal points of the beginning of the movement in Pittsfield. Pastor Ralph Howe spent his life as a lawyer. I have spoken to Police Captain of Operations Cartridge, and I will be meeting with him in March, and trying to put him in touch with the grant writer in Pittsfield, but that's not necessarily going to be comfortable. You get this grant. You bring it to the top, and Northampton will be the greatest if you do the right job with the grant. I'm not telling you what is the right job. That's for you to decide, but you will be the greatest city in America. So get ready for a police president, perhaps, the next time around. The nation is on the verge of bankruptcy. The nation is drenched in blood. Unemployable people contribute to the nation's bankruptcy. [BLEEP].
Well, Hildegard, hold that thought, and we'll see you again. Thank you so much. Ron Patnott, please.
Excuse me. Good evening. My name's Ron Patnott. I reside at 436 North Blandford Road, Blandford, Massachusetts. And I am here tonight as the president of the Hampshire Franklin Central Labor Council. I'd like to thank the members of the city council for taking up and considering this resolution on the Trans-Pacific Partnership, and specifically, I believe, against it. While members of the labor community are not against fair trade agreements, we do oppose free trade agreements that have no protections for workers or the environment, and which could actually lead to higher prescription drug prices and lawsuits against our own government for having worker protections and environmental protections. We're not alone in our opposition to this agreement as it is written. We're part of a broad coalition, including environmental organizations. We believe if a trade agreement doesn't meet the needs of working people, it should not be approved. The Trans-Pacific Partnership was negotiated at secrets, but as components of the agreement come to light, we now know why they were trying to hide it so hard. The Trans-Pacific Partnership was negotiated by corporations and for corporations at the expense of people, working people, and our democracy. Please don't let anyone tell you the labor movement's opposed to trade agreements. The labor movement is opposed to bad trade agreements, which this most certainly is. Any trade agreement our government supports should advance an economy that creates good jobs in America and that enables regular working people to succeed by working hard to get ahead. The TPP will not do that. The TPP is the latest example of a failed approach to trade, starting with NAFTA, which drives down wages and creates special rights for corporations. Passage of the TPP as written will mean lost jobs and lower wages, which is why we will continue to work to defeat it. Trade policy has not worked for working people in our country as a whole. The TPP is an outsourcing deal, not a trade deal. We strongly urge you to support this resolution and oppose the TPP as it is just the latest in a long line of bad trade deals the American people have pushed upon them by corporate interests, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. John Weisman, please.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to address you. My name is John Weisman. I coordinate Jobs with Justice in Western Massachusetts. Jobs with Justice builds coalitions of labor groups, religious groups, student groups, and community organizing groups. And the clock is not -- there we go. Okay. And I want to reinforce Ron's message. I want to thank you for taking up a resolution, which is part of a strategy of telling the negotiators of the TPP, including the Obama administration, that the people don't want this deal. And cities and towns across the country are being asked to vote in such a resolution. So you become part of a movement by adopting this resolution. Very important that there be a movement like this, because we've seen in the past, starting with NAFTA, that the movement has not been strong enough to stop lousy trade deals. And that's a problem in this country, that the movement -- and what is this movement we're talking about? That isn't strong enough. The heart of that movement is the labor movement. The labor movement has been in decline. The jobs that we lost under NAFTA and the rest of them, CAFTA and the rest, those jobs were by and large union jobs, and the result was that as productivity skyrockets in this country, wages are flat. And there's a whole lot of other ramifications. We call it wealth and income inequality. That's a direct result of the decision to negotiate these trade deals. Now, let's look at who negotiated the trade deals. It's corporate America. So we're not talking about people who don't want to wage class war and want to improve, you know, want a rising sea that lifts all boats. We're talking about a certain select group of people that only want to lift their own yachts. And with that in mind, we need to rebuild the other side of the war. They've declared war on us, and we're going to have to fight back. So cities and towns are going to be part of that, because as electeds, you represent the ordinary people of Northampton. So that's why I want to say on behalf of Jobs with Justice, which is very central to this fight across the country, that we really enjoy the relationship we have with the Northampton City Council and the City of Northampton, where you fostered the right to organize, you fostered living wages, you fostered the Worker Center. So I'm thanking you as well as encouraging you all on as leaders of this movement.
Thank you very much. Reed Schimmelfen, please.
Thank you. Reed Schimmelfen, 32 Row Avenue. I will try to be brief and focus on just one of the many aspects of the Trans-Pacific Partnership worthy of opposing this incredibly bad idea, and I've written notes to make sure that I'm brief. My focus relates to the reversal of the balance between governments and corporations. Some people believe that local government should not spend its time and energy focusing on international trade agreements. To those people, I would say just the opposite. Democracy is at its best and most connected to citizens on a local level. This is where we, as citizens, can speak directly to our elected representatives, both formally, like I'm doing here, as well as informally. Our voices augmented by your actions through initiatives such as what you are considering here tonight, bring messages louder and clearer to larger, more distant bodies, such as in Boston and Washington. If approved, TPP will make profit, and the desires of corporations primary and above government authority at all levels of government. Its threat is most vivid on an international level, where a corporation would be able to challenge and overturn efforts here in the United States to restrict trade in businesses that use human slavery, have lax food safety standards, or do damage to the environment to maximize profit, to name just a few. However, state and even local governments would be similarly vulnerable to being sued by corporations who believe a government's actions are reducing their profit. For example, and a very small example, it is my understanding that a corporation could make a stand that their business was harmed by a disposable plastic bag or takeout truck in a restriction. If this corporation was based in a country covered by this agreement, and the U.S. is also part of the agreement, the local government's right to enact such a law would be rejected and the law overturned. I encourage you to support this resolution opposing the TPP. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasper Lapienski, please.
Hi, my name is Jasper Lapienski. I live at 43 West Street. Sorry to deviate from the prescribed topic, but I don't want to voice an opinion on Trans-Pacific Partnership at a city council meeting. I have nothing to say regarding the agenda. What I would like to inform all of you of is that I have proposed having a weather station at the Forbes Library. That is to say, I proposed it at a recent, I believe it was yesterday, meeting of the trustees of Forbes. They said it was an interesting idea. We're going to be exploring possibilities. I hopefully won't have to ask for money, but it isn't expensive, so I think that's unlikely. The idea would be to have a weather station on the grounds of the Forbes Library that automatically collects data and constantly, every couple of minutes, adds it to the Forbes Library collection, which could be used by Northampton Public Schools, Daily Hampshire Gazette, the mayor's office, if they wanted to know whether it's actually the coldest winter on record, because we say every year that it is. And I think it would be interesting for a number of reasons. One, because we don't really have that in Northampton. All the records come from Amherst, where the Daily Hampshire Gazette says they know how many inches of snow we got. Either they measured it themselves, or they're getting it from someone else across the river. And also because specifically, there's a meteorological term called a heat island, which refers to the cluster of buildings in a city center. The climate is legitimately different on Main Street than it is, say, on Finn Street, or certainly than it was when I lived on Burt's Pit Road, it's freaking cold out there. But I digress. The point is, I think it would be a useful resource. I'm going to go through the appropriate channels, and hopefully, within the next few months, we'll be able to say that we actually have a weather station at Forbes Library, and I'll keep you informed.
Thank you very much. That's all. I have signed up. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Ryan Quinn. I live at 496 Elm Street. I am an organizer for United Auto Workers Local 2322, which has 5,000 members in Western Mass, Vermont, and Southern New Hampshire, and also 315 members who live in Northampton. I'd like to speak to the resolution on the TPP. I just want to say how pleased I am to live in a city where that's addressing this and that's looking at making such a resolution. I don't think I can say much more about it that Mr. Weisman or Mr. Patnott haven't already said. I just want to say, as a resident of Northampton, I support the resolution, and I'm proud that the city council has taken it up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak? Carolyn, you're up.
Carolyn Toll Oppenheim. I live at 3 Montview Avenue, and I got here late. I'm sorry. So I'm afraid I may be saying something that someone else said.
Well, it's okay.
Okay. Well, I did what he said. I'm thrilled to be in a city that takes this up, and I'm sure I'm dittoing what others said. I see this TPP as a terrible threat to the public sector, as NAFTA was, and I think these ISDSs are very, very dangerous. That's been said already?
No, go ahead.
Okay. These ISDSs, I'm trying, quickly trying to find what it means, but it -- these are these investor-to-state dispute settlement entities, a private justice system that undermines U.S. sovereignty and democratic control over our economy. Something like this has already existed in corporate tribunals, and in 1999, this public was much better educated about that, and went to Seattle and fought corporate control over sovereign governments. And, you know, I see this as a slippery slope towards losing control over our own municipalities. And where at some point, the corporations have control over our government for financial reasons, and we lose, through privatization, we lose our right to govern our own cities. And I think it's, I'm not being super articulate, but this thing has to be fought, and I'm just very proud the city's taking a stand. If you want to register that.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Wes Hardy, 19 Mark Circle. Actually, not going to agree with everyone else. Trade is one of the best ways to prevent violent military conflicts. It might seem crazy, but hear me out. If you decide that you're going to do sanctions on a country like Iran or, say, Russia, right? People inside that country, for example, Sanderson Farms, can't ship their chicken to Russia anymore, so Russia doesn't have enough chicken, right? There's some guy in Russia who starts making a lot of money with replacement goods, right? There is no incentive to bring the Russians to the table and negotiate, because now there's someone making money because of a replacement good. So there, it doesn't have the effect you want it to. You're carving out a section of the world. The other thing I would say is that jobs only move if there's a more efficient system in place somewhere else, if the cost of labor is lower. In other words, say, 50% of a country is unemployed. Well, if you move a factory there, obviously, people are willing to work for less, because they'd rather get $3 a day than no dollars a day. Which brings me to my next point, which is going to be on the agenda soon. Having a two-tier rate system does relate. If we're going to look at our water system and say, okay, well, Coca-Cola is a huge employer, but we're going to make them pay more, these companies, I mean, some people think that they want to make a profit, and that's evil, and that's fine. You can have that view. I could even acknowledge that some companies may do evil. The problem is, they are motivated by profit. We know that, right? If you start chopping away at their profit, these people are not idiots. They're not going to not change something. They're not, they might, they could retool and move, they could go to Greenfield, Amherst. But I'm most concerned with the small businesses. I mean, mainly in downtown, now what we have left is, you know, bars and coffee shops, because the markup is so high on those items. And the reason the markup is so high is because it's mostly water, right? It's ice, and it's coffee with beans that get roasted. I'm really concerned that we didn't get the pilot program payments in yet, so we found a way to tax, through a backdoor mechanism, hospitals, nonprofits, and the fire provision, which was going to be in it originally, isn't in there. So we've gone from, the consultant said that we needed a more stable revenue stream, and we've removed the fire provision and then given a subsidy to some people, and they're saying that we're doing that because we want to make conservation. So we increased costs on the high users. Well, what if we achieve what we want? What if we achieve that? What if people start conserving? So now we've subsidized these rates at the cost of these people who started conserving, because that's our goal, right? Is to have them conserve. Well, now we're in a revenue deficit, because we're subsidizing one group, and the people who were using a lot stopped using a lot. And that's how I feel, so please take that into consideration.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? No one else? I'm going to ask the administrative assistant to call the role, please.
Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor.
Here.
Counselor Klein.
Here.
Counselor LaBarge.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Schiller.
Here.
We have a qualm, in fact, all on our places with bases. So we have no hearing scheduled for today. Excuse me. Are there any one-minute announcements?
Yes.
LaBarge?
Thank you. I think a lot of your counselors probably got an email on this. The Massachusetts Commission on the Status of Women. There will be a public hearing on women's issues Tuesday, February 23rd, 4:30 p.m. to 6:30 p.m., the North York Municipal Building, City Council Chambers. So hopefully, a lot of women who are out there will attend this open public hearing. I think the citizens in this city really should get involved in many of the agencies, because there are really some good questions to be asking about women's issues and our concerns.
Anyone else? Okay. We're going to have a short meeting tonight. I don't know. Your honor, this communications and proclamations from the mayor.
Yes, I have one proclamation I'd like to read this evening. Good evening, counselors. It is entitled "Montessori Education Week, February 28th through March 5th, 2016." Whereas based on her observations of children and the manner by which they learn, Dr. Maria Montessori developed an innovative philosophy of education in the early 1900s that continues to influence learning across the world and in the Pioneer Valley. And whereas, as a system for education for children from birth through the age of 18, the Montessori program uses materials, techniques, and observations that support the student's natural development, encourage their learning, independence, and self-confidence, and advance the principles of peace through responsible citizenship. And whereas the Montessori method includes developmental teaching, one-to-one lessons, and the promotion of respect among the children, and peace to humankind, now therefore I, David J. Narckwitz, mayor of the City of Northampton, do hereby proclaim February 22nd through 28th, 2015, as Montessori Education Week throughout the City of Northampton, and encourage all residents to recognize the valuable contributions made by Montessori schools worldwide and by the Montessori School of Northampton in our city. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and imprinted the seal of the City of Northampton, David J. Narckwitz, mayor. And we are joined this evening by Susan Swift, who is the head of school at the Montessori School of Northampton, and I wanted to call her up and present this to her in honor of upcoming Montessori Education Week.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And if you want to say a few words, you can.
Sure. I want to thank all of you for, and the City of Northampton, for making a Montessori Education Week. It's a wonderful program, a wonderful educational system, and we've had the privilege of being in the Northampton area for almost 40 years now. So we are thrilled to be part of the community and look forward to many more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Procedural question. In the future, can we have on the agenda listed what the proclamations would be?
Because I think that, you know, if it's, you know, there are many, many different topics, and if we want to, like, put out to constituents that it's going to be on the agenda, they can watch it, or some may want to come. I just think that if we know what they're going to be, they should certainly be on the agenda.
Your honor, the, did you hear the request? It was?
You know, the charter prescribes that there's a time for communications from the mayor.
Right.
I'm not asking you to vote on them. I'm not, it's not asking you to. So I'm, I don't know from, sometimes from week to week, what I'll have.
Right. And in Counselor Adams, yeah.
That misses my point entirely. I mean, I don't think it's illegal or against the charter. It's not my suggestion. I just think if you know in advance.
If I know, and if we can do it, sometimes we try to get them on, but it's hit or miss sometimes.
Okay, thank you.
But I'll, we can try to work on it.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay. So now we're up to resolutions. The first resolution, of course, is, you heard mentioned in public comment, is 16.023. This is a resolution to oppose the TPP and any similar trade agreements. This is upon the recommendation of City Councilors Maureen T. Carney, Lisa F. Klein, and Counselor President William H. Dwight. This is a resolution to oppose the TPP in trade deals if they fail to restructure the misguided and failed policies of the past, and be resolved by the City Council of the City of Northampton. The City Council assembled as follows. Whereas, the Trans-Pacific Partnership, or also AKA TPP, is a trade agreement among the 12 Pacific Rim countries concerning a variety of matters of economic policy, which was reached on the 5th of October, 2015, after seven years of negotiations. And whereas, U.S. trade deals for the past 25 years have been corporate-driven, incorporating rules that skew benefits to economic elites while requiring working families to bear the brunt of such policies. And whereas, the growing trade deficits driven by the North American Free Trade Agreement, or also known as NAFTA, China's accession to the World Trade Organization, and the U.S.-Korea Free Trade Agreement, have displaced from the U.S. 700,000, and there's a zero missing jobs, 3.2 million jobs, and 75,000 jobs respectively. And whereas, between 2000 and 2015, U.S. employment manufacturing dropped by 5 million. And whereas, jobs lost due to trade devastate families and entire communities and can permanently reduce lifetime earnings for hundreds of thousands of workers. And whereas, the long decline of the American manufacturing base exacerbated by bad trade policies that reward outsourcing has undermined our economic security and poses a threat to our national security. And whereas, the offshoring of manufacturing and service jobs deprives local and state governments of sorely needed revenues, jeopardizing the livelihoods of millions of public servants as well as construction workers whose jobs depend on infrastructure building, repair, and maintenance. And whereas, under NAFTA-style trade rules, the U.S. annual trade deficit has increased dramatically from $70 billion in 1993, the year before NAFTA went into effect, to more than $508 billion in 2015. And whereas, the disproportionate voice of the powerful global corporation in the formation of U.S. free trade agreements has advanced an agenda that undermines the public interest and threatens democracy. And whereas NAFTA and all but two of the U.S. trade deals that followed it include special legal rights for foreign investors, known as investor-to-state dispute settlements, or ISDS, a private justice system that undermines U.S. sovereignty and democratic control over our economy by allowing foreign firms to bypass state and federal courts to challenge state and federal laws, regulations, and administrative and judicial decisions in international tribunals. And whereas, foreign investors have already used NAFTA's ISDS provisions to challenge decisions regarding the local building permits, environmental regulations, state bans on toxic chemicals, and decisions of state courts. And whereas, the climate change and environmental degradation threaten communities across the globe, and ISDS provisions in the Trans-Pacific Partnership may expose nations enacting policies to fight climate change through ISDA cases that undermine these efforts. And whereas, promoting economic growth with equity in Northampton requires an approach that reforms the entire trade negotiation process to ensure that voices of workers, farmers, small businesses, families, and communities are heard and their interests addressed. And whereas, the TPP has been negotiated in secret, effectively shutting state and local And whereas, given the enactment fast-track negotiation authority, states, localities, and their citizens will have no opportunity to correct shortcomings in the TPP since its text will not be made public until it's final and no longer can be improved. And whereas, whole mistakes in negotiating new trade agreements such as the TPP represent a missed opportunity to strengthen our economy, reduce income inequality, and promote sustainable growth. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of Northampton, Massachusetts, one, calls upon our elected officials in the U.S. Senate and the U.S. House of Representatives to oppose the TPP and any similar trade deals if they fail to restructure the misguided and failed policies of the past. And two, hereby request that the City Council, that the council clerk, well, in this case, the administrative assistant, forward suitably engrossed copies of this resolution to the Massachusetts delegation, to the United States Senate, the United States Congress, on behalf of the entire City Council. I'll accept a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion.
I believe, I would just point out that there's also a letter that was delivered to the Council President's office from...
Yep, it's right here.
If, I think now would be an appropriate time to read that letter from our...
Oh, look. Papi's.
From our representative in Congress, Representative...
I'm opening a letter now. No check. No check. This is from Congressman James P. McGovern. Dear Counsel President White, I write to express my appreciation that the Northampton City Council will be considering a resolution that's February 18th, 2016, City Council meeting, to oppose the TPP and similar trade deals if they fail to restructure the misguided and failed policies of the past. It has always been my experience that such resolutions and the debate they engender are helpful to me here in Congress when these matters are brought before the U.S. House of Representatives for debate and vote. The views of my constituents in the cities and towns and the 2nd Congressional District are very important in how I assess the merits of legislation. I share many of the views and concerns expressed in the resolution that is being offered by Counselors Carney, Klein, and you. The Trans-Pacific Partnership is an extensive trade agreement involving 12 Pacific nations, which will have far-reaching effects on our laws and our economy for decades. Last October, these 12 nations, the United States, Japan, Malaysia, Vietnam, Singapore, Brunei, Australia, New Zealand, Canada, Mexico, Chile, and Peru, concluded five years of negotiations on November 6th. The text of this agreement was made public, and on February 4th, 2016, the trade ministers of the 12 nations met in Auckland, New Zealand, to formally sign the agreement. It now has a two-year period during which it must be ratified, and currently it is my understanding that the leadership of both the U.S. House of Representatives and the U.S. Senate has no plans to bring the TPP up for consideration prior to November elections. I reject the simplistic debate we hear too often, that trade is either categorically good or bad. We all recognize that trade can be beneficial. However, today's trade agreements and our global trade system are far more complex than the simple agreements of the past, and this is especially true for an agreement as monumental as the TPP. We need to ask ourselves whether today's trade agreements, including the TPP, advance the ability of our workers to find quality jobs at quality wages. We need to ask whether the TPP will revitalize manufacturing and job creation here at home or further encourage U.S. companies to move their production offshore to other TPP countries. We further, excuse me, we need to ask whether these trade agreements promote the public health of our communities, protect our citizens as consumers, and safeguard the quality of our environment. Then we need to ask whether new drugs and medicines will be available in a timely manner and affordable to our citizens, and indeed to all people, including the most vulnerable here at home and abroad. I also believe we need to ask whether this agreement will help or harm workers, small farmers, and vulnerable people in all nations that are party to the TPP. We need to know that laws and regulations approved by our city and state governments will not be overturned in favor of foreign corporate interests because of adjudication procedures established in trade negotiations. And we need to be sure that the TPP and other trade agreements will allow us to address and not further exacerbate our country's growing economic inequality and stagnant middle class. And we need to be sure that the value of our goods and services will not be undermined by the manip, the, the manipulation of other nations' currencies. And after careful examination of these questions and reading and listening to proponents and opponents of the TPP, I've concluded that the TPP will not advance the best interests of our citizens, especially in the matters noted above. I have therefore decided that I will oppose the TPP unless the final legislation that may be taken up by the House provides significant changes and enforceable conditions that make it more responsive to the needs of the American worker, the American consumer, our environment, and local and state governments. Once again, thank you for taking up the serious matter of the TPP and how trade agreements affect our daily life and economy. And I look forward to your debate and vote on the resolution at the February 18th meeting of the Northampton City Council. Sincerely, James P. McGovern, Member of Congress. Counselor Klein.
Thank you. I was happy to be able to have a brief conversation with Congressman McGovern when we were at the All Are Welcome Dinner that occurred a few weeks ago, and Congressman McGovern did share my concerns about the TPP when I talked about bringing this forward to the City Council. He also made a point of saying that resolutions such as these are really helpful for him when he comes to, on the floor of the U.S. House, because they do confirm his position, his position on matters, if it's clear that his constituents, especially if it comes from those representatives from city and town, select boards and city councils. So I was, I was very happy that he agreed to support the resolution and to send us this letter to that effect. And just a, you know, I mean, in many ways, the resolution speaks for itself, and the folks who came up here made some very salient points. In my day job, I work for the AFL-CIO, and I specifically manage the dislocated worker program across the state of Massachusetts. And it's, it's been, in the 12 years that I've been in that position, it's been heartbreaking to go into communities all across the state where plants have been shut down and moved to, to other countries simply for lower wages. And many of those have been made possible by trade agreements that we've passed and that we have passed in the past, such as NAFTA. It's been clear that this trade agreement goes well beyond even a lot of the negative factors of the NAFTA, especially in the ISDS that was described, the way that there can be international tribunals that undermine our very laws around labor laws, around the environment. And it's just been, it's been really heartbreaking, as I said, to go into communities where we've seen jobs eradicated. The most recent, as people have probably followed, is the Carrier Manufacturer that has decided to move its jobs to Mexico. Northampton doesn't have a lot of manufacturing. I mean, we have Cole Morgan L3. It's changed its name, too. But in the last, I think it was three years ago, they did see a couple of dozen jobs lost, not directly due to trade. In that case, since they're a defense contractor, there was a, specifically, we'd lost a lot of defense funding, and that caused them to downsize. But I would hate to see trade policies such as these pass that undermine their ability to be able to compete in a global market. So I, I just hope that Congressman McGovern is able to, as he had said, be, once this does come to a vote, if there aren't provisions, really some serious rethought in provisions given to labor laws and the economy, I mean, and the environment, then I really hope that this doesn't pass when it comes up later on this year. So I think that's, I'll leave my remarks to that and let other folks speak to the matter as they will.
Counselor Klein, did you want to...
I have some remarks, and I actually have a lot of notes, because this is, this is information that I'm kind of learning about as we develop the resolution. So bear with me. I think what's interesting about the TPP is that it's the biggest trade pact ever. It's going to supplant NAFTA, and also U.S. accords with Chile, Peru, and Australia. And countries want to ratify this because they're eager to create what they call a favorable climate for investment, and they also want to show deference to the economic power that the United States represents. The Obama administration wanted to have this signed in February, if I'm correct about this, and then send it to Congress for a vote in May. And as the presidential campaigns have kind of been developing, and the candidates have been voicing their thoughts about the TPP, on both sides of the aisle, negative thoughts, we're reconsidering this. So I think it's interesting that this is really a national moment, looking at the TPP. Hillary Clinton had said that she supported the TPP. She recently made statements that she may not. Bernie Sanders has all along opposed it resoundingly. And then on the other side of the aisle, we have Donald Trump calling it insanity, and Ted Cruz says he also will vote against it. So we have opposition from both sides of the aisle. And the big piece that really catches my attention is these Investor-State Dispute Settlement Courts, ISDS. U.S. trade representatives have been saying that it promotes development, it promotes a rule of law, it's good governance around the world. And interestingly, Senator Elizabeth Warren, who we also could get a very similar letter from, I believe, to the one we got from Congressman McGovern, says that the ISDS clause is the one that everyone should be opposing. It's just, it's, it's what needs to essentially pull away our support from the TPP. The ISDS courts allow foreign corporations to sue governments, and what this means is, is it forces sovereign governments into a private arbitration system that's really dangerous. It leaves governments vulnerable to really expensive legal battles. When foreign investors say that they've suffered losses because of government actions, they, they can sue essentially. And the processes, the processes that are described in the TPP for the ISDS courts are not transparent. They don't allow for civil society input. There's an example of how this already played out with NAFTA, actually, with a similar kind of ISDS process, when Obama halted the Keystone XL Pipeline project, the government of Canada sued for, or is demanding $15 billion from the U.S. government. So that's one very concrete example that we see of this ISDS kind of process. It also ensures that workers, unions, consumers, communities, all kinds of stakeholders who should be protected by government regulations, they get shut out of these arbitration processes that the ISDS would essentially create. It doesn't allow victims to hold investors and corporations accountable for wrongdoings. Unions, NGOs, all kinds of civil society stakeholders can't be parties in arbitration when they're victimized. So the ISDS process is truly, for me, it really blocks any usefulness that something like the TPP could offer us. Especially because we have an increasingly pro-corporate Supreme Court right now that has essentially shut the door on suits from foreign entities. We need to not bolster that with something like the TPP. And I think that's all I'm going to say. I have so many notes, I've learned so much about this, but clearly, our voice here in Northampton is an important piece of the puzzle of how local communities can say no to the TPP. Thanks.
Other comments, debate, discussion? Counselor Adams?
I, I know, aside from what I've heard tonight and read in the resolution, I know very little about this, about this big policy. I'm ready to talk water and sewer fees rates tonight, but frankly, I don't know that much about this policy, other than what I've heard, and I have a lot, I have a lot of respect for everybody I've heard tonight. I don't abstain, because I don't have a conflict, and I, my role as a counselor, my seven years as a counselor, is I won't abstain because I don't have a conflict. I'm going to choose to vote no, and I'll educate myself. I mean, I think I've heard a lot tonight about, about the good reasons to oppose it, but I have to learn if there's another view, and if they're out there, I want to learn what that is. I'm not prepared to go on record opposing something and voting yes on this at this point. Sorry.
Well, I think it's important to point out that it's actually not opposing, it's calling for, it's calling for more scrutiny, essentially. So that, and that, that's...
I'm sorry, I'm just reading the title, which is a resolution to oppose the TPP. So I mean, that's the thing I made up, that's actually in the title.
No, I agree. I think, I think, I have a problem with the title, too, because I think the title's a little ornate, and, but if, the body of the text of the resolution principally calls for, and Congressman McGovern also requesting the opportunity for more scrutiny, and more deliberation, and more safeguards. So as he said, he stands in opposition of it now, but is prepared to change his mind, given the deliberation, and in fact, actually, the, what we're asking for is modification, adjustment to the, the policies as they stand now in order to make it more equitable, fair, and safe. So I'm not, not arguing for you to change your vote, I'm just saying for purpose, for these purposes, it's not a blanket objection to the, to the policies, only insofar as a request that we, we be, to devote more energy and thought on the impacts that we believe that have been overlooked. Counselor Scheller.
I agree with Counselor Adams, and I'd feel more comfortable if we changed the title of it. I don't, I don't feel forced in the geopolitics of a 12-nation trade agreement to be able to outright oppose it without hearing other views, like he said. And, but I agree that it should be looked at more thoroughly. So I would feel more comfortable if we changed the title of it.
Counselor Bidwell, you haven't had a chance to speak yet, so...
I must admit, I came here this evening expecting that I would abstain from this, because it's an incredibly complicated agreement. I don't pretend to have become an expert on it since I first read the resolution and spent a little bit of time doing some homework. And the more I do a little bit of homework on it, the more I'm impressed with the divergence of sophisticated economic argument on this. And including progressive economists who have argued this both ways. So I guess my conclusion still is that I intend to abstain, because I don't, I know that I'm not going to know enough about this to bring a truly informed opinion. And echoing Counselor Adams' comments, I think that my constituents, I'll find out from them, if they disagree, certainly, but I think they'd probably rather have me digging in on water and sewer rates and other pressing matters than becoming an expert on the TPP. So for those reasons, I think I'm sticking with my conviction to abstain on this.
Counselor Adams.
If it's important to the sponsors to, you know, have us have more time, so that maybe there can be a greater statement, potentially in the end, of support, if that's what comes of it. You know, we can postpone the vote, but I'm going to stick with a no vote for now.
One proposal to amend the title, one proposal to amend, I meant to postpone. Counselor O'Donnell.
It's like to ask a question. I mean, it's pretty clear this is a resolution to oppose the TPP, because it's not just a title, it's also, I believe that the resolution at the end, just...
Right. And that item is, calls upon the elected officials in the United States and the Senate and the House of Representatives to oppose the TPP and any similar trade deals if they fail to restructure the misguided and failed policies of the past.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to have that be clear, yeah.
I just want to point out that what Congressman McGovern has said is that he has made the decision that he will oppose the TPP. He will oppose it if it maintains the misguided and fails policies of the past, is what I, what I read, meaning that if he, if there aren't enough safeguards, if he does not have the opportunity to make those amendments that would be required for labor rights and for environmental concerns. So I actually see the title as one that leaves open the door with that... So I actually see the title as one that leaves open the door with that subjunctive, with that if. And so I don't know, I heard, I know Counselor Sierra asked to change, I'm not sure if there's something offered, if there's a change in the title that would be offered, I'm not sure what it would be.
I mean, it's not my resolution, so I would be happy to have one of the sponsors suggest to change, but it does have if in it.
Counsel Klein?
I'm not actually personally interested in changing that title. I feel like it is about opposition. I feel like if we look at past trade agreements that have been made by this country, NAFTA and CAFTA to wit, and we look at the outcomes and the ways in which, I think one of our very smart labor unionists who spoke in the public comment period talked about that this is really an outsourcing deal. This is a way that the United States uses trade agreements to outsource for really cheap labor in countries where there aren't environmental protections, labor protections. The Maquiladoras in Central America are one of the examples of what came out of NAFTA, where much US production went down to Maquiladoras in Central America. People were paid, are paid pennies for their work there. There's no environmental regulation, so that the waters all along the Caribbean coast, around Mexico, have been, become so polluted by the kind of effluvia that have come out of the Maquiladoras, so that the coasts can't be used for fishing, swimming. And these are things that the United States talks about, you know, prizing. We really, we believe in environmental protections, we believe in the protection of workers' rights. Yet with these trade agreements, when we outsource, when companies are receiving incentives to go into countries that don't have these kinds of protections, we're allowing the degradation, I think globally, of both the environment and human rights, human and civil rights. And I think that this trade agreement has, the way that it's structured, will continue to do so in countries that are poorer than the United States, that feel like they need this relationship with the United States. And I just think morally, and politically, socially, it's really important that we express our opposition to this. So that's where I stand as one of the cosponsors of this piece of legislate, this ordinance, I should say.
Counsel O'Donnell?
I actually really appreciate the thoughtfulness that I've heard from my colleagues tonight, and it's not appropriate to rush to approve one thing, anything, without careful deliberation. And so I appreciate that my colleagues are giving a careful deliberation, because indeed, it's a sprawling proposal. It's 12 countries, you add them up, it's almost a billion people, it's four continents, it's a trade pact that governs, what, 40% of the world's economy? And it's everything, it's like literally everything. When I was looking at it, it's, you know, I'm sure it's cranberries in Massachusetts, and electronics in Japan, and oranges in Florida, and, you know, it's everything. And the complex economic rules, and domestic tariffs that we attach to different products in different ways, on and on and on. So it's tremendously complicated. I'll just give you my opinion, having emphasized my respect for the complexity and the deliberation that my colleagues are giving us, which is appropriate, and maybe more time if that's needed. My opinion of it is, it's like if you look at your car, and, you know, the tire has been slashed, you know the car's not going anywhere, just by looking at the tire. You don't have to look at the engine, you don't have to have knowledge of the engine and the carburetor and the muffler and the suspension and everything else. You know the car is broken because of one thing. And for me, that one thing is the trend that it keeps us on towards empowering corporations in a way that I think is undemocratic. I remember when I came here and actually provided public comment, when I was not a counselor, and it was about a resolution that Counsel Dwight had cosponsored, I don't remember who else cosponsored it, but it was about Citizens United. And the example I gave was, I believe it was a Massachusetts case, actually, where a tobacco company had a billboard, and it advertised smoking, and because of that, a law came about that, so you can't have such a billboard or advertisement within a certain distance of a school. And that was ultimately, that challenge to this law, that was democratically enacted, was ultimately upheld and overturned because of this fiction of corporate free speech and corporate personhood. My concern, and the reason I appreciate this resolution, is that we're moving beyond corporate personhood, as others have said, towards corporate nationhood. And I think that is a very disturbing trend. So for me, that's the slashed tire. All the other stuff, I totally acknowledge, beyond my pay grade. But I know that, and I share that concern, I believe, with Senator Warren and others who've identified that as a central issue, in terms of adjudicating major issues that should have democratic accountability built into them, but I don't believe are. So that's my problem with the proposition in general, and that's why I support the resolution. But again, I appreciate the debate on it.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes, I'm going to support this resolution. Being a union rep for AFL-CIO for 31 years, the voice of the people are very, very important. And there's no question about it. We heard it tonight, we heard them come in front of the microphone to tell us, as citizens, as union workers, the importance of this resolution. And I do know for a fact, even in the city of East Hampton, which is a corporation, and I'm not going to mention the name, where many people have worked there for many, many years, one of my neighbors got affected with it. They would just bring you into a room, all of us, and it would be, by number, come into our office, they're done. Could not afford their homes anymore, they had no jobs. I agree with this resolution. I don't have a problem with the language on it. I think it's putting it right where it's at. I think the jobs that have been lost, and the families, and the working people, and people who work in factories, enough is enough. And I am very pleased to see that Jim McGovern has also written this letter. It tells you something. I mean, he himself works very, very hard on important issues, and I'm going to support this resolution.
Actually, to Counsel O'Donnell's point, and actually Counsel Adams' point as well, I mean, it's interesting tonight, we are, and public comment from Wes, we are discussing water and sewer rates. This is something, a power that was recently conferred upon us as representatives who are accountable to the power, that we get to actually determine these rates, whereas before, it was not quite as transparent and as accessible. And in, actually, to Counsel O'Donnell's point, this slashed tire point is, and Counsel Klein pointed this out as well, this is the one that gives me the most discomfort. The fact that actually, those opportunities where we, you know, we have a plastic bag ban in Northampton that was sponsored by Counsel Adams, along with Counsel Spector, and that there is a possible scenario that that would not be recognized or accommodated, despite the fact that this was vetted in this community by representatives who are accountable to the people. Having that, any opportunity, not only in this community, but any other community in this city, it kind of runs counter to what theoretically we believe in. If we were starting to accede to corporate decisions and free-market governance, capitalism's a system, it's not the form of government that we have. And we're not, we're a mixed economy. We have socialism, we have capitalism, we have a mishmash of things that make us a first-world nation. But one of the most important things is the Constitution that ascribes us the opportunity to make our own decisions, to manifest our own destiny, and not have that destiny fabricated as a policy by a corporation that will trump our participation. And that's actually what informs my sponsorship of this. So I, it is my profound hope that we are able to pass this and send this on to Congressman McGovern, to give him the reinforcement on the floor, or he can make his case, and hopefully our voice is amplified and our concerns are expressed more directly. Any other discussion on the point? Why don't we have a roll call, though?
Counsel Bidwell?
Abstain.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Dwight?
Yes.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Murphy?
Abstain.
Counsel O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counsel Shara?
Abstain.
Counsel Adams?
So we have three abstentions, five yes, one no. The resolution passes in first reading. We'll have a chance to revisit this in the next council meeting. The consent agenda, and this, including the consent agenda is the minutes of this meeting, of the last meeting, February 4th, 2016, the minutes of the January 28th, 2016 Joint Council of City Council and School Committee, and then a petition from Electric Eye Records of 52 Main Street, Florence, as a dealer of second-hand articles, offsetting motion.
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Now we recess for finance, and...
We spring into action.
We spring into action. Counsel Murphy?
Excellent. Pam, would you call the role of finance?
Counsel Murphy?
Here.
Counsel Adams?
Here.
Counsel Carney?
Present.
Counsel LeBarge?
Present.
First item is to approve the minutes of January 21st, 2016. Do we have a motion?
To approve. Second?
Any discussion on minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. The next is a financial order. It's 16.031, Financial Order for Free Cash for the Recreation Department for Modular Structure. Upon the recommendation of the mayor, order that $70,000, that's an additional $70,000, be appropriated from the FY16 General Fund Undesignated Fund Balance, also known as free cash, for the purpose of funding design services, site preparation, and utility procurement and construction of a 2,160-square-foot modular office building to serve as the administrative headquarters of the Northampton Parks and Recreation Department. The mayor is here to speak to this request.
Yes, I think, so you may recall that I came to you several months ago, and we asked for a donation of $400,000, based on our best estimates of what a project like this might come in at. We had over a dozen folks who took out bid packets when we issued the bid solicitation. We had, you know, six or seven that came to actually look at the site and get more information. And then on Tuesday, we opened the bids, and the number came in, the low bid came in at $414,000. And so, which we had expected it to come in below $400,000, but that's what we had projected, but that's not what it came in at. So my reason for asking for this additional, well, we need the $14,000 at a minimum to sign the contract and to get the process moving, but what I'm asking for the additional funds for, which we may not in fact need, so on the 414, we want to be able to add a contingency, about 10% contingency, which is fairly standard, just in case we encounter any additional problems. And then we also need to have $5,000, which is not part of the bid package, to basically connect our fiber optic, our municipal fiber optic system to this unit, so that they can connect to the city's computer system. So we'll do that through a contractor that we use to do all of our iNetwork. And then we also have an additional $10,000 in there to cover the design costs, which we thought would have been covered under the 400, but obviously, the bid came in higher. So its 414 is the total contract price for the entire construction, installation, all of that. And then we've got the fiber optic, the design, and then the contingency that we're adding, so that we don't have to come back to you if there's some unexpected overrun. We'll at least have something in a contingency fund. But we hope not to have to do that, because it is a fairly straightforward project. There is actually a, there's a zoning board hearing next Thursday, and I know all of the abutters have been notified of that, so David Pomerantz will be going forward on a site plan, for site plan, next Thursday. And our goal is to try to get the contract signed, so that we can, they can fulfill the goal of getting it operational for June, so that the Parks and Rec Department can be moved in. So that's why we're asking for two readings on this additional funding, so that we don't have to wait another two weeks, which will delay the contract, which will push the project out even further.
Questions? Counsel LeBarge?
Yes. Mayor, could you explain on the procurement part of this? I mean, we have Joe Cook, he's our procurement officer, correct?
Yes, and we did a very extensive procurement. We issued an RFP, you know, so we solicited bids from firms that, you know, install these, manufacture and install these. And again, we had, I forgot the exact number, but he'll have it, you know, over a dozen companies took out bid packets, which is what happens. Then we had others that, and then we had people who came for sort of a technical meeting to get more information. But at the end of the day, this is the low bid. So, and, you know, when we estimated this, we tried, I think David Pomerantz looked at pricing, looked at similar-sized buildings and other projects, and that's how we developed the $400,000 budget. The low bid was 414, so...
Right, but Joe Cook gets paid by the city anyways, correct?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Don't we use Joe Cook to do this?
Oh, yeah, Joe oversaw this procurement, most definitely.
Okay.
But, I mean, David Pomerantz, because it's within his department, worked on all the technical specifications. But Joe is the overseer of the bid process, so he has, he makes sure that we follow the, you know, Chapter 30B, which is the state's procurement process, which we did, and, you know, so...
Thank you.
Yeah.
Counsel Klein?
Yes.
I know that these additional funds aren't being earmarked for the things that came up in the meeting we had with the abutters that are Ward 7 residents.
When you say additional things?
The additional funds that we're approving, we're voting on tonight.
Okay.
But I do just want to go on record saying that I think it's really important, I would be really happy to approve even more funding if we can make sure that the needs and the requests of the abutters are respected. And I think the most important of those being the piece around having the heating and cooling system inside the building to make sure that the noise level is low, because this really is a building that's going up right in the backyard of two folks who live in Ward 7.
Yeah, we specified in the bid that they could, there couldn't be any rooftop units at all. So this is a proposal that has no rooftop units, because I know that was one of the concerns.
That's wonderful.
Actually, I didn't know what I needed, but I brought it anyway. The bid also includes, well, it's kind of a flat rendering, but it also includes, because I know this is important to your constituents, installation of a dense, eight-foot-tall sort of additional kind of things... Green screen. Behind the building. These are the big existing ones that are there already, but we're going to be putting in a dense, you know, they're eight-foot-tall, eastern red cedar juniperus Virginia. So that's going to provide a really dense screening behind the building as well. So that's actually part of that contract. So we built all that.
Great. I'm glad that you're sharing that, because we didn't yet, we didn't yet have access to the maps. I think they just went up today. But when the abutters letter went out, we didn't see the revised map, so people hadn't gotten that sense of what was...
Yeah, so this was, this is sort of the... Yeah, so this was, this is sort of the specs that they, and you know, it includes the handicap ramp, it includes all the other, all the other hookups that have to happen. So it's pretty much a soup to nuts, you know, everything from site preparation to paying for the manufacturing unit, to installing the unit, to, so pretty much all of that's is built into the, what they've been on. And there's, you can't see it here, but there is no rooftop units of any kind that, I mean, there's obviously a heating system and it has to exhaust to the outside, so there's, there's not really such thing as an indoor, there's got to be some exterior exhausting of it, so I don't think they'd want a nuclear reactor in these things, probably... So yeah, so that's, there's going to be some, but it's not going to be rooftop, and that was one of the main concerns that they had, and that was specified in the bid, so...
And does the site allow for the trees that are there that were put up when the addition was put on to remain in place?
I think, I think, I think most of them, yes, but any that are taken down will be replaced with this other tree belt as well.
Okay.
So I'm, those are the questions I know when they come next Thursday before zoning board, site plan review, that those can be addressed at that time.
Great, okay, thank you.
I know Berkshire Design worked on this project, and, and they're going to be working up and even more sort of updates of those three dimensionals that we had from before to sort of show the elevations and stuff, so...
No, no.
Question like Counselor Carney does, if you don't?
No, that's why I was, I was indicating Counselor Carney had a question.
So, two questions. Is the contractor that's been awarded the contract been, has that been released? Is that name released yet?
Um...
Are they a local contractor, are they...
I believe the contractor's name is Vanguard, and they are, I believe they're from Eastern Massachusetts, and again, these were, these are folks that specialize in modular construction.
Okay, so my question, I guess around that is, there must be, I'm just wondering how prevailing wage rates apply in a case like this when it's modular construction? I mean, when it's typical construction, you know, there's posted rates for every trade and all of that.
Well, it's a public, it's a public project, so anything we do generally that's public requires prevailing wage.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just curious, because it's, because it's a modular construction as opposed to typical construction, if there's, it just seems like...
Yeah, I mean, the, 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 the building is manufactured in a plant in three pieces...
Okay.
And comes to the site, is trucked to the site and will be assembled. I mean, it's, and it's basically, it comes wired, insulated, finished walls, it just basically gets attached, and they also will be preparing the, the, you know, the footings and...
So that wage rate is probably only applied to those who are on the site.
I could do some research, I could do some research, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not too much.
Okay, I, I don't know, I'd have to do some research on that.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Just, I'll ask this question, the Chair of Finance can rule me out of order if it's not germane to the discussion, but just with regards to other available space in the city that was discussed when we originally had this whole issue come up, and you were open about, you know, the Fiker Building as, as a place that in theory would work, I just wanted to know if there's any update about the, the lease negotiations?
Yeah, the, the school committee put out to bid the lease as, as presented to the council or approved by the council, and the Non-Ituck School, you know, answered the RFP, and I believe we're in the final phases of them signing the lease, so they are...
I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah, so they're, they're, it's with them, they're going to sign it, and so they will be given an extension for 38 months, whatever the terms were, so they'll be there in the near term, yeah.
Thank you.
So...
Other questions for the mayor on this?
Now you do. Now you do. Will central services be clerking this, clerk of the works, so that you have Pomerantz doing the oversight and that?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, it's on school property, but it's a, it's a, central services will be the ones overseeing it. And it's not a very, it's, as I know we met with the neighbors, it's not a super long construction process. It's going to be site prep, it's going to be running the utilities, and the water line actually goes right by where the building is, and then a separate contractor will be running the, the fiber optic connection, but then literally they're going to show up, it's probably going to be on flatbeds, and, and, and they'll just crane it into place and assemble it.
Right, so I, I...
And then build the handicap ramp.
I'd imagine then that there's no real potential savings to be realized as you do sometimes when you have a project that you can, you can do some savings in construction. This is pretty solid, straightforward, because it's, you're buying a unit, you're putting, and it's just assembling it in place, so...
Yeah.
Also consequently, probably not a lot of room for, there wouldn't be as much risk for cost overruns, you have a pretty clear idea what you're...
Yeah, I was actually talking with Susan Swift earlier, because they did a modular classroom a few years ago, and, and yeah, very straightforward process, and the pricing was, you know, several hundred thousand for theirs as well, so...
There are, just something that came up recently that, that actually, the Gazette wrote an editorial about that, and up at the prison, they have modular structures that are actually, they had, I think, built into it like a 20-year practical use lifespan. Is that what we're looking at here for this?
Yeah, I mean, we, we realize that it's, that these have a, you know, 10 to 20-year lifespan, and, you know, we, we understand, we were expecting it to be a, a long-term solution, because we don't frankly have the funds to build a standalone Parks and Rec facility at this point, but it's at least going to give them a place to move into. And, you know, I point to the building G at Smith Vocational, which, you know, 20 years ago, we probably put, you know, $200,000 or $300,000 into, you know, and that's at 20 years ago costs to take an old building and turn it into the office buildings that it worked, so you know, and, and the rec park and rec department was there for 20 years, and so now we're moving somewhere else. They're kind of the nomads of, unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
But we think this is actually going to be a really good location, so, and, and these, I mean, if you've seen these buildings, I mean, this is a very, you know, this is not a FEMA trailer. These are, you know, it's probably, it's probably a better quality building than the one they're in now at Smith Vog. Actually, I'm, I'm actually positive it's a better quality building, insulation-wise, electrical wiring, just all that stuff, it's going to be a better building, so, and quiet for the neighbors, too. Have to emphasize that.
More questions for the mayor on this one? Yes, please.
Since, since the quality is so high, what gives it such a short lifespan?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know that it's, like, I guess I'll have, I'd like to check on the lifespan of it. I mean, I, I know the ones that they built up at the, up at the, up at the jail, I think, I suspect they're probably getting a little bit harder use up at the jail than, than this office building will, will get. I mean, I know some of the things they were having up there were some leaks, and they were having some cracking of wall, you know, board and things like that, and some of those kinds of things. You know, we'll be obviously taking care of it and maintaining it, and we're counting on doing that, so we're going to try to make it last as long as we can, yeah.
Any more questions in finance? And all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. The next thing on our agenda is 16 dot 003, An Ordinance to Delete Fees from Chapter 174 of the City Codebook. On the recommendation of Mayor Narkowitz, an ordinance, the City of Northampton, providing that the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton be amended by revising Chapter 174 of said code, providing that, providing for fees, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton. In the City Council, assembled as follows. One, that Section 174 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, be amended so that such, section shall read as follows. Section, Chapter 174 deleted. Chapter 174 shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced with the following wording. See fee schedule on the Northampton website. And the mayor's here to comment on this one, too.
Yeah, I mean, this, this actually came out of your ordinance review committee that I think several of you sat on, as well as, as well as Wendy Maza and Lynn Simmons, and it's again, part of the ongoing review of the ordinances vis-à-vis the charter, vis-à-vis the administrative code, and, and the City Council several years ago accepted a chapter of Mass. General Law, which basically delegates to the departments the setting of various fees within the department. And so right now, we have some fees that are in the ordinance book, and some fees are just, you know, set at the department level, and they're set, you know, by the department. And so these fees, because they're actually not voted on by the City Council, are, we're pulling out of the ordinance book, and the idea is we're going to be creating basically a code of regulations that will include any of the regulations or fees that are promulgated by individual departments. So this is sort of, again, more cleanup of the ordinance books by removing these, this whole section of fines out of the Code of Ordinances.
Would the council was on that study group that they found?
I'll just add that, it, it just, it does not diminish the ability of the departments to set those fees, just puts them in a different place.
Just because we don't have the codebook here, what is the, so what set of fees is listed here that's being deleted? Is it miscellaneous? Is it...
It's every, it's, it's whatever departments had their fees listed, I can pull it up or maybe...
I mean, is it, is it many?
I think Pam can maybe pull it up.
Oh, okay.
She can scroll through it for you.
Okay, and you could do other things rather.
The problem with it being in the ordinance is, is that if a department decides to change a fee from 20 to $25, if it's still reflected in the ordinance book as $20, and they've changed the fee to $25, then it just creates confusion. And so that's why it's not, because really the ordinance, the ordinances can't be changed without coming through the City Council and mayor. I mean, we can't change, we can't change the ordinance book without that.
So when we delete the fees from the Code of Ordinances, we...
The fees will still exist, the, yeah.
I understand that there'll be a separate fee schedule that will be accessible.
Yes.
But it's not located in any, it's not located...
Well, we're actually working on, well, we're actually working on a, for now, a centralized page that'll have all the fees on it, and most departments should have their fees, you know, if you're going to go to the Board of Health and you want to know what a septic system inspection fee is, you'll find that on their website. Or, you know, how much it costs for a, you know, if you're, if you're going to the collector's office and you need a, you know, lien certificate or...
How will fees be authorized now by, they won't be authorized by the City Council anymore?
Yeah, they haven't been for a while.
Okay, how will they be authorized, just by...
They'll be authorized by the departments setting reasonable fees, and obviously I'll be, I'll be monitoring and approving them.
Okay.
I mean, right now, under Mass. General Law, you know, you know, neither they nor the City Council nor anybody could set like, you know, a $1,000 fee for something, you know. The fees under Mass. General Law and under plenty of SJC rulings have to be reasonable, and they have to be, they have to align with the services that are being provided. So, and, and again, we, the, the city has accepted a chapter of Mass. General Law, which delegates that to the various departments and agencies to set their own fees.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, I'm happy to hear, Mayor, that at least you'll be able to have the authority that going to have to come through you.
Oh, of course, no doubt about it, yeah.
Okay, because I think there's concerns, and there was concerns, about deleting in the fees, I can tell you that right now. Some people have talked to me about this.
No, yeah, no, what I, the way I envision it, and is that, that if a department wants to update their fees on an annual schedule, they'll submit an updated fee schedule and review that, and will, it'll be approved, and then it'll be added to this, this Code of Regulations, which, actually even going to look into, like, I don't know if you noticed, let's see, one of the other things, for example, and this is not really about fees, but one of the other things that came out of that committee was the planning board's subdivision regulations are in the ordinances, even though by Mass. General Law, subdivision regulations are solely the purview of the planning board. Only the planning board can approve and change, so we, but we have them in our, in our Code of Ordinances, which, so it's sort of an odd situation. So we're trying to actually work, we're going to, we're going to talk to general code, you know, we did it for the administrative code, where we actually created a new category on this, on our online ordinance book, which has the charter, and it has the ordinances, and now it has the administrative code. We're actually going to work with them to see if we can create a Code of Regulations so that we can put all the various, because you know, the Board of Health creates its own regulations, and then there's different regulations that various departments can create. So we're trying to figure out a way to have it searchable and accessible like it is now. It just doesn't belong in the Code of Ordinances, so...
Yes, Counselor O'Donnell?
There was a question that came up in the ordinance review committee that we talked about, because of a memo from the Division of Local Services and Department of Revenue, which seemed to state that although fees can be set administratively, it doesn't necessarily remove the authority of the council to set fees. And I just wanted to note that, I'm not sure we can resolve that tonight, but it might be something that the solicitor can discuss with us in legislative matters. And the other idea, just to put it out there, again, not really for resolution tonight, but, you know, when we put things into the executive, although you, you are accountable as mayor, it's a different kind of accountability, and so we also discuss mechanisms that we might explore. You know, if a fee went up steeply over a short period of time, for example, would that trigger a hearing, a public hearing about it? Just for the purpose of transparency and feedback, which you, you don't have, you know, if it's no longer coming through the council, not like it would happen all the time, but I think that kind of thing is important in general, and so maybe it's something we could explore to a reasonable extent, especially in legislative matters, so, just to note that.
And obviously, the council always has the ability to call in any agency or the mayor, ask a question about a fee increase or any of that stuff, just like you're talking to me about, so that's always, you always have that option, so...
It's just, that's a good, those are good points, and if a, if a member of the, the person, any person disagrees that, believes that any fee is unreasonable, their only recourse would be to take the city to court, so, so yeah, it's, it's worthwhile considering if, you know, because there isn't, ask public of a process if, if, if it went through a council process, which would entail a public vote, if this is the, if that's the best way.
Counselor LaBarge?
Yes, if I can recall, with the reconstruction of Route 66, after mayor it was completed, I received calls from two paving companies that apparently they were hired to go ahead and do some of the paving on people's driveways, and it was not necessarily Route 66, but it was in Ward 6. And at one point, it was $50 for the permit, they as companies here in Northampton were never notified of the increase from $50 to $250, which is huge, that's a huge increase. And I didn't know anything about it either, so I had called the director of the Department of Public Works, and I was actually told that the reasons why that was done, it was either to go ahead and lay off some of the staff, go up on the fees. And I really feel that I think it's important with businesspeople that they are notified, that there's going to be increases like that. They knew nothing about it until they went to apply for that $50 permit, and they were told $250.
Okay, I suspect that was probably PW approved, that was probably...
Right, but you know, if you don't communicate, that's a problem.
Okay, I agree with you.
Thank you.
I do pride myself on communicating with the public on, on initiatives that I make, and so I think I'll, yeah, I think we'll, we'll certainly be able to communicate if there are major fee increases. I think we can, so, it's just, the question remains if, whether it's, requires an act of the legislature to change a permit from, you know, $20 to $25, if that's the level, so, but...
Other questions?
Seeing none, then all...
Seeing none, then, all in favor of a positive recommendation?
What are we, is this is on the...
Leading the...
Okay, good. So I, I lost track.
This is in finance, and we had a, we have a motion. In a second, so, all in favor of a positive recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? And that's all that's on our agenda. I don't have any new business, so, motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
To adjourn.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Come out of recess, I'm back on the regular meeting. And that brings us to item 16 point 031. This is the financial order for free cash to the recreation department for modular structure. Motion?
Need approval.
Second.
Does it have further discussion on this item? There is a request for two readings, just a heads up, so, um, discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Carney?
Yes.
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherr?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
Suspend the rule.
Second. Pass the first reading. This is a motion made to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading tonight, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor of suspension of rules, please say aye.
Aye.
To approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded for a second reading. Discussion? Polls?
Counselor Dwight?
Yes.
Counselor Klein?
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Murphy?
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell?
Yes.
Counselor Scherr?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell?
Yes.
The motion passes and seconded.
Thank you.
Now, we have item 16 point 030. This is an order to establish water and sewer rates for FY 2017. This is a referral to the Committee on Public Works and Utilities, and I would recommend of...
Move to it.
Also a further referral to finance. Motion's made and seconded. So, um, is any, is everyone comfortable with the addition of, additional referral to finance? And there'd be a public hearing? That's, the public hearing will be held at, uh, in the Committee of Public Works and Utilities. Your honor?
I just was going to, I was going to say, I'm happy to, I, I know that you have a meeting scheduled on the 29th.
That'd be the first meeting of that, of that committee.
22nd? 29th? What's that? Fourth Monday?
The 14th?
Not this month?
The 15th, Monday.
No. Good to know.
A week from Monday.
Thank you. So, so is that the date you anticipate doing the, you'd like to do the hearing? Or, uh, I wanted to just make sure...
It's hard to say, because we have not been, credit as a committee, we haven't reported our officers yet, and...
I know.
So, it's, that's the quandary.
Okay.
So, I can't speak for the committee. I am on the committee, but I can't speak for the committee.
Okay. That's why I had waited till now to introduce this, because I was waiting to see what the committee was going to do, but I know you got delayed because of January, February.
There is another alternate possibility that I don't, I would possibly to have one of the public hearings, or a public hearing in finance, which is fully assembled.
Yeah, I didn't, I...
Oh, you mean it outside of this council?
Right, 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 right. A public hearing to discuss the...
So just assign a public hearing to one of the committees.
Yeah.
Have them hold it.
Well, I think we could, if you have no objection, I don't think there's any, I think two hearings of...
No, I, I, I was just going by your new rules, that this was the committee that was going to be, um...
Although it's harder for the public, so, you know, if there's two events rather than one event, but either committee could do it.
I think it makes more sense for the Committee on Public Works and Utilities to hold a hearing, just given the scope of that committee.
It's, uh, the mayor, we, the timeline starts to tighten up.
Yeah, that's one of my...
And that's, I, I know that's one of your concerns, because if we don't have that public hearing on the 29th, which is difficult to call, because we're not assembled, but, uh, Counselor Adams, you have a thought?
I consider these major changes, I think we should have two public hearings, each, each committee, finance and public works.
And, and public works can set another date for the hearing, it doesn't have to be at the meeting.
That's true. That is true. Once we assemble, we could...
Coordinate ourselves and then pick a day.
That is true. So, Counselor O'Donnell?
Would you have the finance hearing in council? Because I think people probably want to come to the main event, but... The, the public hearing might be easier, and it could be a joint meeting of finance and public works committee, because there's some overlapping membership. Could be a joint committee meeting for a public hearing on a different day than that committee normally meets. And, and kill two birds with one stone and have a joint meeting and public hearing.
So I would just wanted to point out that your finance meeting would normally be happening next Tuesday.
Yeah.
So, the 23rd, and then followed by the 20th.
The, the public hearing could be any day we wanted.
So perhaps we could, um, try to coordinate that, because I'd obviously want to be able to coordinate so that I could be there, and we could have whoever else we need to have, um, be part of that meeting. I, I also did, well, I think you're in the middle of a vote, but I...
Well, it's okay, it's, it's, oh, is it relevant to the discussion?
It is. I just wanted to, um, clarify any misconception. You're, the council's being asked to vote on the volumetric water and sewer rates, which is what you do, and what you did last time, and what the Board of Public Works did. The other fixed departmental fees that are also being recommended by the, um, you know, by the consultant, um, those would, we're still going to be proceeding with those, but those would be things that would be implemented by the department, as have been implemented in the past. The, the sewer, I mean, the, uh, the meter fixed fee, and then the new fire line fee would be something that, that would be implemented at the departmental level, harkening back to the discussion we just had moments ago. So that's the distinction in terms of the actual water and sewer rates that, under the new administrative order, that you are, I have to present to you to approve?
Yes, and, and actually, I'll, I'll read the order if that helps any, is for, to clarify your point. It says, order that effectively, effective July 1st, 2016, the per 100 cubic foot rates for water and sewer are as follows. Customers with 1-inch meter or smaller, that's the tier one consumption, 0 to 16, uh, cubic foot consumption is $4.73 per CCF, and tier two consumption is lesser than 16, I mean, is greater than 16, would be $6.621 per CCF. Customers with a meter larger than 1-inch, all consumption will be $6.09 per CCF. Non-metered sewer would be $7.52 per CCF based on 80% of metered, uh, metered water consumption, and metered water consumption, the rate would be $7.52 per CCF. Counselor Adams?
So does that mean the, the fire protection charges would be set unilaterally by Northampton Fire and Rescue?
No, that means that they would be set by, um, they would be set by DPW, yeah. They would be set by DPW, yeah. Not filed for...
That's true of, of the fixed charges as well?
That's our, that is our, yeah, that is our intention.
Could you, just explain why the, the volumetric charges are handled one way, and the other charges that can have a dramatic impact?
Yeah, no doubt about it.
For the, for the rate payer?
Yeah.
How, just explain to me why, how they're handled separately?
Because the, the, you know, we're viewing them as, as, as a fixed fee to help pay, support the service. In this case, the sort of ongoing maintenance of, of the system versus the actual consumption rates, which are what the board and the city council have traditionally set. Um, you know, the, they've never, those fixed rates have never been voted on by anybody, and they weren't, you know, you didn't have them before you last time when you were voting on the rates themselves. So, I realize it's all part of that, but, I mean, you know, you vote on the tax rate, but you don't vote on the fees that the tax collector charges, and you don't, you don't vote on the lean fees, and you don't vote on all the other associated fees with running that system, so, um, so certainly, if, so that's, that's sort of how it's, we're breaking it out. But obviously, I'll be the one, I'll still be the one explaining those to the public, and I'll be explaining them at the hearing, so you'll understand the background. The other thing we're doing, so, I mean, it's, so, the other thing we're working on, and we're hoping to launch it in the next couple of days, is we are going to be putting a calculator, uh, page up on the web, website, and so people will be able to take their current, uh, you know, take their current, most current quarterly bill, and you'll be able to put in two inputs from your current bill, and it will show you exactly what you would pay under the new, both rate and fee system. So that's, so we're working on that, again, so that people can individually take their bill and see how their last quarter consumption would affect them. Yes.
And, and the low income exemption?
That's also going to be implemented as a, as a departmental, you know, as a, as a departmental initiative, yeah.
The public hearing will be an opportunity to understand the whole package.
Totally, yes. We'll be presenting this, you know, the, we're presenting the new rate structure and everything as a whole, but the actual setting of the rates is what, is what the council is being asked to do, the volumetric rates.
Counselor O'Donnell, and Counselor Adams, and Counselor LeBarge?
This might be one of the, the few fees that perhaps there is some logic in, in creating some kind of, um, connection to a council endorsement, perhaps, you know, if, you know, the low income exemption is just the, is, because the low income exemption is just the, for giving the fixed part of the fee. Right?
That's true.
So, yeah, right, so, I mean, since that is, as Counselor Bidwell points out, that's a significant part of this, maybe, maybe even not this year, but maybe in the future, um...
I guess I would say to you, I am...
A form of system could be arranged to figure out how the council could vote on that as well, since we are voting on the other part of the rate, somewhat lopsidedly, because you have taken a very good step of, of reforming the water and sewer rates, but it feels, feels incomplete to vote only on part of it.
I think, I guess it would, I, I understand that, but if I'm, if I'm also presenting to you what the total fees are in addition to the rates, you can, if, if, for example, the, the, the fee part of it was over the top, then that might cause you to, your judgment about the rates might be impacted by that.
Sure. No, I, I take that point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Counselor Adams, and Counselor LeBarge?
Just on that last point, I find it hard to believe that the council found one to be reasonable, they vote against the other one. But, but I'll pass for now, because, um, I have a bunch of questions, but I don't know, I don't know how, how deep, how...
But I thought we were referring tonight.
This is a referral.
I don't know how, if you want to get into that.
And Counselor Adams had asked me if, if there would be any discussion on the referral, and I would, I said I wouldn't rule it out of order, but it, it depends how, how granular you want to get on this. Are they going to be just as relevant in a, in a hearing?
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, yeah, I mean...
Okay. Why don't, why don't we save it for that? Counselor LeBarge, I would ask the same question of you.
Yes. Um, I just have some questions for the mayor on this, please. Looking, even though it's a referral, looking at the tier ones and the tier twos, and the customers with meters larger than, um, one CCF, and non-meters, I mean, people are going to see this and say, non-meters and meters. Looking at this, it's, it looks like the new sewer rates are going to be proposed at 80%? Is that what it's looking at?
That's exactly, yes.
Right?
80% of water consumption.
Water that is going to be charged with, that's coming out of your home.
Right now, we charge, and this is turning into the hearing, but right now, charged based on...
But people are going to call us, Mayor, because they're going to see this and ask questions.
Yeah, and we're going to have, we're going to have a lot of information to explain to them what, what's happening, and at the hearing, it'll be explained, and, um...
Right, and I think we, we had, when, when the consultants gave us a presentation, which we had a very long presentation, and a PowerPoint presentation, no less, um, and I think, I have a feeling we're going to see that PowerPoint again, or some, something similar. So I think that it's best, given the fact this is a referral, and I think your questions are relevant, but I think in the course of the hearing, it would be, um, more productive to bring them up then, I think.
But trust that I'm, I'm, we're going to be putting out information that'll really explain this to people.
And, and you've conveyed to the mayor your interest in this particular issue, and I'm sure that, that they'll address that. Um, okay, so as to the point of referral, the, the, once again, it's referring to finance and the, the public works committee, so, um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. All right. Uh, we have a, this is a second reading, this is the warrant on it for the upcoming election on March 1st, 2016, and I'll bet someone's going to ask me to be reading.
It's me.
Yeah. So, is there a motion? Put that on the floor?
I approve.
Just a second.
Second.
Discussion? For the primary folks? If you're not registered for it, if you're not registered for it, so, there you go. Uh, any discussion on this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.